Welcome to the Plington School Committee meeting for Monday, January 25th, 2021, first one of 2021. Just a quick notice here that pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions, the open meeting law, general law, chapter 30A, section 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Plington School Committee is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance and members of the public has been permitted, but every effort has been made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order using Zoom either by computer or telephone. The meeting is being recorded for informational purposes only and is not considered to be a public record. Oh, I know that was exciting. And I did say at some point I will actually have that memorized, but we're not there yet.
Mr. Chair, you have your full compliment.
Thank you very much. Welcome, Amy. All right, so we have a whole bunch of people on tonight. Welcome, welcome. We had minutes from our last meeting, December 14th. Did folks have a chance to take a look at those and were there any amendments or additions?
I make a motion to approve the December 14th regular meeting minutes.
I'll second that.
Okay, I will do a roll call vote. Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Mr. Catigan?
Yes.
Mr. Anton?
Yes.
Ms. Hempel?
Yes.
And John Wahlmason is a yes. Okay. I didn't have any. Well, I had a number of emails that came in to me asking about our plans for in-person learning. Hopefully, we will address a lot of those questions tonight. And I encourage folks to attend the meeting, many of whom appear to have done so, so thank you for doing that. I didn't have any other correspondence out there. Jill, are you aware of any that came in? Nope. Okay, so that's good. Negotiations. Two things on that. One, we will be meeting with the Teachers Association second week in February for initial discussions, so more to report on that to the committee at our February meeting. And additionally, you will note at the end of the agenda, we have an executive session to talk about amending, potentially amending the school bus contract. We will do that at the end of the meeting for that piece of it. And then on to unfinished business. Building-based substitute. Peter, did we go ahead and and hire for that, or is that something we're still working on?
Working on it right now.
So we did just remind folks in an effort to provide a little bit of a relief valve. From the substitute perspective, we did authorize Peter to go ahead and hire an in-based, a building-based substitute for well, for hybrid or in-person for the remainder of the school year. So we will, we are working on that now. And then Christine, did we have an update on the playground?
We do have an update. At our last school committee meeting, I received permission to move forward to engage the firm of Beals and Thomas, and they are a landscape architect and design firm. On January 7th, well, first we had some snow, so they couldn't come up there, but on January 7th, they came out to their initial site visit just to kind of get an understanding of the lay of the land. They met with Matt Jerky and it was Dave LaPointe from the firm, as well as Amanda Hardy, who will be working on our project. They then came back on January 19th to do, to start their topographical survey. Everything went fine. They ended up having some questions, so I decided to see if we could try to have a virtual meeting just to see. I wanted to pick up from where Peter and Jason had left off. I didn't want to have to relearn or reinvent everything. So I thought it'd be a good opportunity for the company to ask questions. Me or Peter and Matt Jerky was also in that meeting. So on last Friday, we had a virtual meeting with Matt, Peter Venito, the two folks from Beals and Thomas and myself. And they just talked about when they did this survey, what happened when they went out there, that it was pretty uneventful. They had some questions about the removal of the current playground, and my understanding was that that was to be removed. We talked about the placement of the new playground. And then there were some questions regarding the septic system. So Matt Jerky was able to go through our records and find a plan to the septic system to answer those questions. Peter was able to confirm the progress that had been made, that yes, we do want to remove the present playground. And the placement of the new playground was, was pretty much what he thought was going to be happening. Next, we're just waiting for the results, the topographical survey. What they're also doing is they're talking with Emmy O'Brien, which is the company that Peter and Jason had worked with, just to kind of confirm if they moved the plan slightly, does it, does it going to have a big impact? Can we just tweak the way the equipment's going to be placed? So we're just still trying to answer some questions, but we expect that this is going to be, happen pretty quickly. It's not going to be a long drawn-out process, thankfully. So we're waiting to hear back from the results of the survey. Any questions that are left lingering with Emmy O'Brien to get those answered? And then we're kind of ready to start moving forward. Do you folks have any questions?
Christine, your questions were very insightful during that meeting, and I appreciated the fact that you were able to attend, so thank you.
I'm just nosy.
And I have to apologize. That was the first playground meeting that I have not attended since the inception of the project. But I do appreciate the fact that we, we did allocate the funds to hire some people to help us oversee some of the finer points of this project, especially since there are so many legal ramifications to trying to have a playground that is both accessible, safe, and will last our school community hopefully for decades to come. So just having that expertise to back up the desires of the committee and the community is it's really comforting to have. So thank you, Christine and Peter, for meeting with them last Friday.
Welcome. And Matt Jerky, he's been extremely helpful. If we want to create a playground that's ADA compliant, and it will, the plans will be compliant, and they will check the compliance as they're going through the stages of building the playground. And then they will confirm that at the end that it is ADA compliant. We want to make sure that his capacity for growth and funds and circumstances dictate that, so that's a feature that we're looking for. And then we want it to be fun. So that's what we're trying to do, and I think we're off to a good start.
And Christine, my, my assumption is, is that they will, they will help us put the RFP together because of the work that they're doing in an effort to make sure that we have the right stuff in it. You're on mute, Christine.
Thank you. Yes, especially the installation piece. You know, I can understand the words, but I don't understand if that's what they're actually completing, what we want them to complete. So it's kind of, it's going to be a two-phase event. First, the equipment, and then the installation. So they're, they know what they're doing. They had amazing questions, and they're extremely helpful, so I'm very, very optimistic.
Great. Anything else on the playground? Oh, okay. Peter, I assume the power lines are exactly where they are, hanging too low still, again?
I did see an email from Matt Jerky from probably about a half an hour ago, and he seems to think that he may have some inroads to help us with that, so hopefully something is happening soon.
I do want to let you know what we have learned. The line, the low-hanging lines are not electric lines. What happened is the electric utility had moved their pole, and they moved their equipment from the old pole to the new pole. They then have to notify the other entities to move their equipment, and that's kind of one of the things they do when they have downtime. But Matt did have a contact at Verizon, and he made two requests of him. They have already completed the first request. And they have actually responded back on this, that they have actually seen the site, so again, I it could be coming off the agenda soon.
That'd be fantastic.
That would make me so happy.
Just, just because it's kind of getting to be the joke of the agenda. Meeting after meeting year. The solar project, I believe that the engineer came out, engineer electrician, Peter, building to take a look. And again, for folks who, who aren't aware of what we're talking about is we are in the process of considering putting solar panels on the back wing of the building that has the metal roof there, the classroom wing. And we, you know, we, we, we signed pretty much a letter of intent with the company. But now we're in the process where they need to kind of take a look at everything and see whether their initial thinking fits the reality of what's on the site. So they're going, they're doing their sort of investigative work, and then we will get back together to figure out what, what works or doesn't work from that standpoint. So, you know, we, we did the letter of intent in order to be able to get the most favorable rates from the, from on this, which would have a, you know, have a decent impact on the rates that we would pay for the electricity at the Denit, and it also, of course, has a beneficial impact that we're generating electricity on site. So, you know, more to come on this. This, this may still not, you know, that there's still always a possibility that, that based on what they find, it doesn't work out as, as we hoped, but, you know, we're in the process, and we'll see where that goes. And certainly, as we consider a new roof in the years to come for the main part of the building, solar will be something we'll always keep in the back of our mind to make sure that we can utilize, you know, renewables where it's possible.
Somebody definitely was out on site, John. I did not get a chance to talk with that individual. I was a little tied up.
No, that's fine. I mean, they'll, they'll let us know when, you know, they'll let us know when they have information or questions, so I think that's, that's good. Okay, I think that's probably a good place to, to pause and dive into the discussion that I think majority of folks are hoping to hear tonight. I'm sure most folks on the, on the call saw the article in the paper this Friday, which was regarding the Silver Lake meeting a week and a half ago or so. And a desire by the Silver Lake Committee to look at a possible change, the hybrid schedule that would bring cohorts A and B in an alternating Wednesdays. I don't know. Jill, did you want to just give a little overview of sort of what, what's being thought of and with that piece of it? And then I think we can talk a little more about the Denit and, and some of the other challenges and so on that we have to, that we're dealing with now and that we would have to deal with if we were making changes to in-person.
So the Silver Lake School Committee did ask us to begin exploring the possibility of alternating in-person learning for all students on Wednesdays. We did discuss the potential impact on our elementary families. We recognize that some of our families may depend on older siblings on Wednesdays, and we also discussed some of the potential and unknown impacts with regards to health and safety, as we had originally made Wednesday a remote day for all students. And this additional day in between the cohorts was recommended by the state as a, as a mitigation strategy when we initially created our hybrid model. So the impact of eliminating that day is, is uncertain. And I wanted to share this information with you as this, this potential change could impact families in Plington as well. With regards to other factors that have not changed since the beginning of the school year that led to our, our decision to be in a hybrid model. I just wanted to reiterate, which we have done in the past meeting, the six feet required at lunches. And the additional coverage that would be needed for lunches if we removed lunches from the cafeteria and placed them into classrooms. And our principal can speak more to that. We are required to provide transportation at two or more miles from elementary schools. Again, that may or may not be as big of an issue for the Denit Elementary School. And then there's also the issue of social distancing. CDC is still recommending six feet. What I can say is that the state says between three and six feet. However, what we do know is that the closer we are, if we go within that six feet, the more close contacts we'll have. And the more close contacts we have, we increase our potential that we may need to go remote if we're unable to staff our model. So these are things that are important to recognize. We also recognize that other schools may have larger spaces or smaller class sizes that have allowed them. Or maybe they have decided to go less than six feet. But I also know that other schools have had to go remote, and our schools have not. We have been in this hybrid model since the start, and we have been able to maintain that because of our mitigation strategies. So again, those are just some of the things that we took into consideration with the hybrid model. These are state regulations, and I would, I would imagine that perhaps with the vaccination or, and with fewer, perhaps cases, that we may see some changes to the regulations, but at this time, this is where we stand. Principal Venino and I have talked about the potential impacts and what that would look like and what he may need with regards to either alternating Wednesdays or moving his lunch from the cafeteria into classrooms instead, and that would in fact require additional staffing. But we can also try to answer any questions you may have with regards to this issue. We recognize that our families and our students, this is not an ideal situation. But we also appreciate the lengths that people have gone to to help us stay in person and to provide these in-person days for our students because they are critical for their learning and for our students. So we feel fortunate that we have been able to get this far without having to return to or become remote.
So I would just offer just a couple of other thoughts, and then Peter, I have a couple of things I'd like you to sort of touch on. You know, I, I think as a school committee and as the administration, you know, this is something that we are thinking about all the time, even though I have a real job and I'm supposed to be doing that. This is, this is something we know. I mean, this, none of this is ideal. I think there's much greater strain certainly for the younger children who are not going to operate as well and be able to, to access the curriculum as well remotely. You know, and unfortunately, our large, some of our larger grades are our youngest grades, which poses an additional stress on us. You know, I think some of us on the committee, and I've talked to Peter about it, you know, if we, if this had been three or four years ago, we, we probably wouldn't have had an issue because we had much smaller class sizes across the board and probably could accommodate them in the school. Absent the bus issues and other things, I mean, there's always, everywhere you turn here, there's, there's an issue that we, that we have to or a challenge that we have to address. So, you know, I think that and not only have we been regularly thinking about it, we're going to keep thinking about it. And now that we finally have a vaccine, that we still don't know how quickly that's going to be distributed and how well that's going to be distributed. But now that we have that, I think this is going to be a regular discussion point as we continue forward. You know, over the next few months, because we've been committed the whole time here to, to deliver as much as we can from in-person learning within, you know, appropriate safety guidelines, both for our, our, our students, but even more so given what we know about COVID for our, our teachers and our building staff to make sure that, that they keep well, but also to make sure that they can be there to be able to staff it, because I think, and Peter, maybe you can speak a little bit to this, you know, every day, we're some, not every day, but I would think regularly, we're, 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 that we're one teacher away from, from potentially having, not being able to staff all the classrooms. And the staff has done an amazing job of being flexible in, in moving into roles that are perhaps not their normal ones in order to be able to, to keep things moving. So we do not have an abundance of staff if we start triggering and, you know, triggering quarantines. And that to me is an enormous challenge, especially if we go below, if you were to go below six, six feet, the number of potential close contacts increases greatly. And that has, that has an ability to, to, to challenge what we're trying to do. But Peter, you, would you speak a little bit to that? And, and also some of the staffing concerns, you know, if we would have to deal with lunches?
Certainly. Like everybody else, I think I want this thing to go away and go back to normal. However, the science behind it just dictates that we need to follow certain protocols. The biggest obstacle that I foresee would be lunch. Right now, with kids sitting six feet away, I can get 42, I have 42 desks in there right now, and that, that serves our purpose right now. I think it would be a challenge to get too many more in there. Perhaps I could get to 50. I haven't done the exact measurements. But that, that would be a real challenge. I think the transportation issue becomes an issue, and it's, it's not even, we've been fortunate that we've had very low numbers of, of students and/or staff testing positive. But the close contacts are killing us right now, certainly not literally. I, I feel like every Monday I get together with our secretary, Mrs. Hanson and Nurse Fox, and okay, what information did you receive over the weekend? And so-and-so is waiting for a test result, so they're staying home. So-and-so is waiting for this because they were close contact from soccer, from hockey. The numbers have been low, but the amount of close contacts and students that have had to stay learning remotely has, has gone up significantly. So I'm not sure. I'm not sure how, how much sense it might make to put people in, in that kind of potential danger by bringing kids in. If I, if I looked at that correctly, if we were to do something with alternating Wednesdays, John, I think students might gain an additional nine days in cohorts A and B. I'm not sure that that's a game changer that's worth the risk of that much more possible exposure. It's, it's kind of how I'm looking at it right now.
Okay. I just wanted to, I'm going to do a couple of things here. One, I'm going to ask Mrs. Walker just to talk about how the Wednesdays are used right now. Because they're, they're, they're sort of, it serves multiple purposes. And again, we're talking about right at this moment. You know, we can get a couple of weeks out and may change our mind, you know, some other information may come in that allows us to change, and we're going to keep evaluating everything. So I want to do that, and then I want to give committee members an opportunity to offer any additional thoughts, and then we can open it up for other questions. So, Anne, did you want, would you give us just sort of an overview as to how, how the staff is utilizing the time? Oops, we can't hear you, Anne. No, it's not working. All right, why don't we? Why don't I move to the committee members and we'll come, we'll come back? Did other committee members want to add any, any thoughts or have any questions that you would like to raise?
John, this is Dan. The, you know, I, I agree with what Jill and Peter said. You know, and Peter spelled it all pretty, pretty cut and dry. The additional-
What about some catch-ups?
The additional alternate days, you know, it's not, it's not like it's going to add 20 or 30 more in-person days to the school year for the kids. And believe me, we're feeling the pinch here. We kept our son out of a preschool program. Our younger son and, you know, Michael's feeling the pinch with the two days a week, and, and so you know, I'm, I'm not ignorant to the fact that this is really detrimental affecting all the kids. But, you know, there's been a lot of talk about the vaccine and everything, but teachers aren't even getting the vaccine yet. So I mean, that's kind of a non-starter for me until phase two starts and they start administering the vaccine to teachers, which, you know, they, the governor wants all these schools to open back up. He should have moved the teachers into phase one like they've been asking. But apparently, he's got other things that are more important. So I, I really, I agree with what they've said. The risk really outweighs the benefit at this point, in my opinion. As much as I'd love to see my son going back to school more. I mean, just the miniscule amount that it's going to add and the stress it's going to add to teachers and the uncertainty of everything else. I mean, it becomes a scheduling issue, becomes more convenient for families. And I, I just don't see the benefit to the kids as opposed to the benefit to the logistics of a family. And I, I'm just, at this point, I'm swaying against it. That's all I get to say.
Other, other thoughts, comments?
John, this is Anne Walker. This is Anne Walker. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, my, my computer didn't have the audio. Can I speak now? Is this okay?
Perfect.
Sorry, thank you so much. I was saying that I had mentioned to Jill, Dr. Prue, earlier on that this Wednesday has been crucial for the success that we've had over this time. We have been taking this time and planning for every scenario possible on a Wednesday. So because we have a lot of kids that do have to quarantine, and we don't know that ahead of time, we have to make sure everything we do is both digitized and ready to do for students to work on in-person. We have to make sure that we have work planned a week or two in advance for the students that are at home or that we won't be seeing. So we're copying, sorting, organizing, distributing. I mean, there have been cases that we've had to even deliver work for families because the children are, the families are quarantined, and we don't want them entering the building when they're COVID-positive. We've also been using that time for professional development so we can better learn some of the technologies that we've had to incorporate as a result of the hybrid model. And a lot of that is just teaching each other some things that we've learned through our work. And we've also used this time to, well, plan together, which has been just a great time to, to be able to plan together, reach out to families, have our meetings, because we don't have substitutes in the building or anybody that can cover our classes if we have to go to a meeting, so with, like a parent meeting with a, for an IEP or a 504. So these, this time has been utilized to, so we don't have to worry about trying to pull a teacher from a classroom. We've been able to have our meetings during that time with parents, sometimes virtual, sometimes in-person. So we, this, and you did make mention of this, and I want to mention it again. The attendance at our school has been phenomenal for the teachers. I think a lot of schools are having problems because the teachers are getting COVID or testing positive. Our teachers have so far done an amazing job because they've done a lot of sacrificing. And even our planning, we're planning across the room from each other, and we're not coming in close contact with each other. We're not eating close together with each other. In fact, I eat at my desk most days. So these Wednesdays have been great. Our teachers have been very dedicated to this process and trying to help these kids as much as possible. But I do, you know, I see where we all want everything to be back to normal. That's what every one of us wants the same thing. But I agree with everything that you've been saying about the, even just staffing for this would be challenging. So yes, those Wednesdays I worked, and we have our professional development times also during those times. So we've, those Wednesday mornings have been crucial to the success of this. Our teachers have been, and our students have received, I think, more instruction than, I think, like Dexbury just went back, and I think they're going three feet apart from each other. But those children at home were getting a packet and basically checking in with the teacher. Our students are getting teachers all day long. They have contact with us. We have the F of them. So I know this is not an ideal situation for any of us. It is very challenging. But yeah, this Wednesday morning, I think, has been extremely beneficial and helpful for us to get everything ready for those kids, especially the ones that have to pivot on a dime and stay home that we were not planning for. So we plan for what we can't plan for, basically, on Wednesdays. It's been, it's been very helpful. And unless there's anything else, I'm going to mute myself.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other, any other comments from school committee members? So we've got quite a lot of folks on the phone. I'm going to just try this the easiest way. If you have a question, you want to unmute yourself, feel free to do so. We'll just try and take turns, and we'll, we'll do the best we can to answer any questions, other questions that folks have.
Hi, John. My name's Danielle DeAngelo. I just, I, is it okay if I have a- Hi, John. My name's Danielle DeAngelo. I just, I, is it okay if I have a few questions for you? So I just wanted to bring up, my son goes to the elementary school and I just, first and foremost, I just want to say I'm so thankful and grateful for all the teachers, administration, staff. I mean, they really have done an amazing job. So and we are just so happy with everyone there. I just want to say definitely goes so well appreciated, first and foremost. Next, I just wanted to to ask a few questions in terms of, you know, we have seen other schools within the South Shore kind of thinking about other models that they can execute that maybe, maybe instead of just every other Wednesday, has that been considered at all? Instead of every other Wednesday possibly doing like a Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and keeping the Wednesday as teachers have an in-service day for, you know, planning and then there's a cleaning day in between. Has that been considered at all?
So I'll start and then, you know, we can, others can can add on. Yeah, so I I think we were constantly considering all of the different options. I think the the greatest challenge, well, the the key challenges right now for that, where we are right now, so Plumton's in the red, we we got that dubious honor last week. And of course, we're with a lot of, a lot of other towns that are there and have been there earlier than we were. You know, we don't, you know, the teachers are phase two for vaccines. We don't know where that, what that means yet. They're, you know, they're saying February, but we'll see. You know, we have to actually have the vaccines to be able to give to people. So with with that sort of background, we have a couple of things that are that are our challenge to bringing you know, really doubling the students in the building. We have the lunch piece of that, which again, that is absolutely regardless of whether you're three feet or six feet separation. Lunch is required to be six feet. And so my guess is if you're going to try and do that in the cafeteria, that would require four lunch periods, which means you're having lunch, what, most of the day? At that point, or are you going to do it in the classroom? And and in that instance, you know, the the teacher can't just cover that because that's part of the time when the teacher the teachers have have their own time. And so now you're going to have to find additional bodies to be able to to cover the extra classrooms if you're going to have some lunch in the cafeteria and some lunch in the classrooms. And the challenge there is, is that we have a hard enough time trying to find a substitute. Let alone trying to find two or three additional staff. And then we also have the budget impact of that. So that's a challenge. I'm not saying any of this isn't doable, but these are challenges that we have to look at. We do have busing, though it may not be as big of a deal for Plimpton because we do have a number of families who stepped up and are dropping their dropping and picking up their kids. And then we have, you know, CDC guidance at six feet. And I understand the state's recommendations, but the CDC guidance is still at six feet. And again, that's for the safety of the students and if even more so for the safety of the teachers who are probably more susceptible to this than the younger kids are. And I think the part that gets me the most on this is that we've been sort of plugging along here like the tortoise, right, in the race? And we've been doing the same thing since we started. We have the mitigation strategies and that's been working so far. Will it work the whole time? I hope so. I mean, I can tell you, if 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 I placed a bet in September, I would have already lost because we're we've done much better than I thought we were going to be able to. But my greatest concern is that increasing of close contacts and us wiping out, not, you know, us knocking off a couple of key teachers that all of a sudden because they've got to quarantine, even if they don't end up being sick, they have to quarantine until the positive test results come back, that we're going to start kicking the school out to full remote for a week at a time or two weeks at a time, which to me creates even more disruption than what we have now. And I know right now is disruptive. There's no doubt about it. You know? So I I get that. I'm just, I'm going to pause there. Do other folks have stuff to add to that?
John, I just want to go back to what you were saying about the lunch regarding the lunch. So I think the creative thinking maybe could be considered with this. I mean, there's the gym. If I, if I'm correct, there's also the big space in the gym as well as the lunch. Are we thinking out of the box in terms of how those spaces can be used? Also, yes, integrating like a segregated lunch schedule might not be ideal, but maybe it can be considered. I just want to, you know, I just want to share that I feel that a lot of parents are at this point are worried about their children's mental, social health. And I think that a lot of parents also feel that at this point right now, you know, there's been conversation that I feel that most of us feel okay going, sending our children in at three feet with a mask. And I was also wondering if there's going to be another parent survey.
Okay. And Peter, feel free to to jump in here. I I did right before the holidays finally have an opportunity to go look at the school because there was no one else there. And I haven't, I haven't been in the school since, since, well, February of last year. And looking at the creativity that has gone on in order to address what we've already done. I mean, the the conference room is no longer a conference room. It's 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 a, you know, medical safe area. The conference room is on the stage. The least of the time I saw it, a good part of the gym is there for supplies and everything. So the people have plenty of space to get the supplies. I mean, everything shifted around. The fifth grade classroom is the art room now and vice versa, because we had one more kid than we could fit in in that class. So we needed a slightly bigger room. If if the worst of our problems are to figure out when we get to a point where we can be have the have the staff and the students at the safe distance and get under, again, and this may be with vaccinations that we're able to get to this point where we feel that it's more beneficial for the students to be in there if the staff is vaccinated, even if they're not quite at six feet, we still try and maintain that. If we get to that point, we'll, and Peter, we'll figure out lunch, right? I mean, that's, but if we figure out lunch and we do something creative there, we still don't we still don't solve the challenge of maintaining CDC guidance and you can have a difference of opinion on that, but the committee has been pretty steadfast in trying to keep at that and you know, whether whether that's the only reason we are still running along in our hybrid, I don't know. You know, there's just too many different factors.
John, to to your point, if I could jump in real quick, even making the shift from the art room into grade five, even that has kind of maxed out its its capabilities. If I have one more student that wants to come in for hybrid, I can't, I can no longer fit them in even the art room. So then the gym becomes the next viable option. Right now, if we wanted to consider the gym as an extended cafeteria, we might be able to make it work, but I have live in-person gym classes twice a week. So that is not an option for those two days. I certainly don't want to shoot down any ideas. That's not the purpose. That's not, that's not creative. That's not helpful. But I can give you my word that I've been thinking about every possibility of of what can we use for space since probably the middle of June. And we're stretched out right now. And to the point about potential lunches in the classroom, that does become a staffing issue because I have one to two adults to cover, that cover lunch right now in the caf. And we can do that, but if we have to go with, I have, I have one particular lunch that has three grade levels translating into six, six classrooms. I I don't have six adults that would be able to adequately support and cover that. So yeah, I I do like to think that we've looked at this creatively and from a lot of different angles and I've sought a lot of opinions from people. It would be, it would be very challenging to to bring more than what we have right now and be able to keep it at six feet.
Peter, to the point of what you were saying about having volunteers, can I ask you what the challenges would be if we were to possibly open it up to parent volunteers? Is that something that would be considered or, you know, of course, like everyone's masked up and everyone could be, you know, even taking their temperatures before parents, I think, would be willing to go in and volunteer because we all want to help. We all want to be a part of making it in a better, you know, environment for everyone. So any, any consideration with parent volunteers jumping in on that?
I'm certainly open to anything. The kind of, one of the the pitfalls to that is that we're we're trying to keep people out of the building, quite frankly. And and I say that somewhat jokingly, but the fewer people in the building, the less chance for transmission, which is kind of one of the goals. We've had to cut down on a lot of a lot of parent volunteering. We've always done kindergarten was almost daily that we'd had parent volunteers come in, but it was based on some recommendations that we we want to reduce the amount of people in the building. Just just based on the the health concern. I I appreciate your suggestion and it's definitely something that we've talked about. I'm just not, I'm not sure that introducing more people that have had contact with more people. I'm not sure that that's necessarily the road we want to go down, but like I said, I'm open to suggestion, absolutely, and I appreciate that.
And and I think that, I think the challenge, the immediate challenge, and I mean, as of tonight, is just that we just jumped into the red. We can tell from the attendance at the school that we have more community spread. You can tell that from those numbers, but you can see it even better in that. And it's not, because you know, you could have, and Plimpton's a small community, you could have a bunch of numbers and none of them, if any, touched to the school. But we're seeing that there are these issues. And so it's, I think it's, it's, it's this is not a, this is not something that we're going to talk about tonight and then we'll talk about it again in May. We're going to be, we're going to have to keep looking at this as everything is very dynamic and is changing quickly. You know, you have, you have a, you know, you have new people in charge of the, of the, of the COVID issues at the federal level. You know, there's going to be a lot that's changing. And again, we have the two vaccines that are out there. And so I think as we continue to evaluate this, I think we will be looking for other creative solutions as we can, we can try and do that. And I I think we're, I know I'm open to 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 looking at all of these different things. But we're going to have to keep the keep, keep a, you know, keep our hands on the, on the, on the science and try and do the right thing so we keep things open regularly. I I just, if, I don't want to get into the cycle where we're open and closed and open and closed. And I think we just, what we saw today, what Needham, Needham High School just shut down for two weeks and they actually are concerned that they actually have school spread, which is a whole different thing than just having some of these contacts. Plus, we have this more, this UK variant that's now kicking around and they're concerned by March, we're going to be there. My hope is, is that we can see things come down a bit as far as the cases, we can get back out of the red and we can keep evaluating.
John, if I could add to, just this past week, they come out with another study that said, oh, so much, not so much a study, but an update that the largest growth in cases was from ages zero to nineteen, which is right in the wheelhouse of what we're trying to protect right here.
Dan, sorry to jump in. Can John and Peter and whoever else confirm how many, so the amount of cases that have actually been confirmed at Denofort? Is it three? Or has there been any more?
Four, I think.
Four, okay. So has it, can you disclose if it was staff or children?
We can't disclose.
Okay, understandable.
One of the, one, my only point, and I'll let, I'll let you keep going with the question is, you know, those are individuals in the school community that tested positive. What you don't see in that number is the amount of of student or staff that are impacted from a quarantine perspective because there's someone, a close contact that may have had it. And those numbers are quite a bit higher. So you know, which we should, you know, we should see, right? I mean, if 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 we're in the red and the surrounding communities are in the red, you should expect to see that.
I understand that. And, you know, I think just as a small community too, I think that as from a parent's perspective, we're just looking at a timeline here, just trying to figure out what is best for the children and how we can benefit them from all of this forward thinking. I'm trying to think positive in going forward and what the timeline might be, you know, in what we can expect. You know, I think that a lot of parents are feeling a little bit of unrest just in terms of, we want to keep everyone safe, but we also want our children to not be negatively affected because at the end of the day, that is who is being affected the hardest. And it's regardless of what all of us are debating and talking about, it's amazing that there's only been three confirmed cases. But at the very same time, you know, the children are, as time goes on, as time progresses, they are the ones that are being impacted the most. So how can we be positively thinking? And also trying to think of a timeline here because time is running out for the end of the school year. So is there any timeline proposal or any discussions around any sort of timeline proposal at all? Just curious.
There hasn't, hasn't been discussions. Of course, you know, we last met in December. And I think only at that point were they saying that the vaccines were, you know, were out and approved. So, you know, the lot has happened in in five weeks. I think it's really hard to, 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 to put a specific timeline without knowing what's coming. That said, what I would commit to you is that we're going to keep talking about this both at this committee and then we also have an advisory committee, which is made up of a couple of school committee members and folks from the Denne. And we will be talking about this in 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 between our discussions at the school committee. Because I think that there's a lot of, there's a lot that's changing rapidly now, which, you know, honestly, you know, we we could come up with a timeline and 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 it, I, it's, it, it's like saying, what should we put in? And we're going to have this discussion later tonight. So if you can stay on for that, you know, what should we put in the budget for the fall because of COVID? I don't know. I I, you know, I, and and we, you know, which is, which is why when we did it this year, we said, we're not putting anything in and we'll just have to see where it takes us because it's just a guess. My hope is, is that we're going to continue to see improvement. We're going to see cases coming down. We're going to see vaccine rollout and that is going to very quickly change or have the potential to change what we can do for the students. And, you know, I I think anything is, and everything is on the table, whether we're looking at certain grades to prioritize to bring in, whether, however, we need to do it. Where we sit right at the moment, I I don't see how we can do something in the next two weeks. Right? I I just, I just don't, I don't see that without trampling on what we have already done that's been very successful. So are we going to keep evaluating this with each of the new bits of information? That is what I think we should be doing. I don't know if other committee members have thoughts on that. It's much easier just to let me do all the talking. Are there other questions?
I have a couple of questions, a question and a couple of thoughts. Angela Welber, two children in elementary school. They love school. They love their teachers and I think the school's done an incredible, incredible job. I think all the families are extremely happy with the quality of the virtual work that's happening, the amount of face time that they're getting. And at least for the kids that are in school are, I know, I see my kids come home so much happier, tired and just, you know, they've seen kids, they don't complain about being, having their masks on all day. One question I have is about the buses. I know that's one of the barriers, but I I see the, you know, the pickup and drop-off line much longer than obviously other years and I see empty buses driving by. So I was actually just curious how many families are using the buses and maybe that's not so much of a barrier as we might see it as. So that's just one question. The other question was just to follow up on what Danielle was saying about another parent survey. I know the last one was, I think, over the summer, the very beginning of the fall. I think a teacher survey would probably be beneficial too. I don't know if that's something that you consider. I'd love to know more of the teachers' thoughts on these things because they're obviously the ones most impacted. And I think, I think maybe some of the feel from parents is not necessarily, we, we need to see changes in two weeks. I think we all realize the reality of you know, us having some higher numbers in Plimpton. I think generally numbers in Massachusetts are seeing a downward trend. And so that's hopeful. We're, do you see a hopeful? I think there's some positivity thinking that phase two will start soon and that teachers will be able to get vaccinated. And so I think what we'd like to hear is not just like the negative things that could be happening, but more about the planning that is on the horizon for these changes to be made and like being thoughtful and obviously considerate about all the safety pieces in that we don't have dates around vaccines yet for teachers and those types of things, but like changes take time. And so I think being proactive around how these changes can be implemented in the near future, I think would be, would be helpful in terms of increasing school time. Just my thoughts.
And I just want to also second what Angelo was saying. I absolutely agree, but I also wanted to note Um, I just want to also second what Angelo is saying, I absolutely agree, but I also wanted to note that I think. That the lack of communication to parents, I think that has been, that there isn't a plan in place that we don't know about. I think that has been a point of discussion that people are feeling that. We just need to have a confirmation that there is a discussion being had, that there are plans to go forward, thinking positively. I think that there's, that is also a big factor in all of this as well.
Always gets me, why don't we start with buses? I think the issue is the buses aren't a problem until they're a problem. And so I think that, you know, Plimpton has really stepped up. And you know, we had those discussions this summer and and you, you know, all the families that are doing the pickup and drop off. You know, you 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 help make that not a problem for us to begin with because. Everyone sort of jumped in on that, so I think that's good, and is that right, Peter? I mean, we probably have some capacity, but.
No, we do, we they, we definitely do, John, the the issue is that we have to make sure that we have enough space for every child every single day. I think when we sent out the initial parent. Survey, I want to say it came back at like something like eighty-five percent of people said that they were going to drop off and pick up, which is great. The issue there is that I need to make sure that I have a seat for for every student every single day. So if that was the case and all of a sudden, for whatever reason. Family couldn't provide transportation, I need to make sure I have enough space on each one of those buses.
Right, and so that's what I mean, it's not a problem until it's a problem because if. Ran into, if we ran into an issue where all of a sudden we were fine and then we weren't because another student needed to come in. Then we we can't do it because we're legally required to provide that transportation, this is one of those issues where. Certain rules don't work in the pandemic, that's one of them, it just doesn't work, it doesn't help us. Nor does having a bus with twenty students on it, that's not really useful carrying space. So let me, let me try and remember everything.
Can I ask a question about the buses before we move on? Thank you, this is Heather Eddy, and and again, just want to echo all of the appreciation for all of you. Is there, is there a process that has been suggested for maybe asking for a waiver? I know how the regional buffing rules work, just with COVID being such. Such a odd circumstance that they might provide a waiver. For us to not have to follow that rule, has that been something anybody has has looked into?
So can, Jason, can you comment on that?
Yeah, I I can see Jill know something about this too, but. I I'm the chair of the statewide regional schools committee for the Mass Association of School Committees. And we approached the state legislature along with the Mass. Association of School Superintendents to try and ask for a waiver, they would have had to change mass general law for that to happen. They did change quite a few mass general laws because of the pandemic, but that was one. That they chose not to move on, and it has something to do with funding mechanisms for regional school transportation. And if they had mended that law, it would have excluded the monies that regional schools would have received from that fund. Would have put our budgets in quite a pinch, so we did approach that, that was something that we had thought of way back in April of last year.
Are we, is Denneville a regional school? Just curious.
So we're not a regional school, we're part of superintendency Union Thirty-One. So we co-contract with Halifax and with Kingston. So it's not a regional school system, but the governance of superintendency Thirty-One is a parallel. Governing body, so it has parallel functions and we do receive. Some state assistance because of the high school and middle school being a regional district. And then that flows down to the superintendency Union Thirty-One situation.
So the buses, the bus piece of that is in our control, meaning as as as. Denne families, and it's in our control because if enough people. Bring their students, it's not an issue, but again, it's not an issue until it's an issue. So that that's what I mean, so I mean, I think, I think that is, that is a challenge, but it's one that's overcomeable, right? I don't think that is one of our our really big ones that we could, because we have control over that, as with some number of other things we don't. Just like we don't have control how this silly virus spreads, like we don't have control over that, we have control over the bus thing, we can make the choices there. There was. Now we got to figure out what the other questions were, one was about a survey. I think we have to have a plan before we have a survey and we don't have a can of a plan until we understand. What's going to change to be able to allow us to 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 make. To make changes, and I think we're going to get some clarity on that soon, I think when, I mean, I don't, I'm not sure we. I don't think this committee is is interested in going below the six feet. I think that would, that would. Cause a lot of concern and perhaps, again, as I've talked about too many times now, many potential issues with. Having the school shut down for lack of staff. But when we can mitigate that with vaccine. Then every, I think that gives us great flexibility. And can we spend some, can we sort of task Peter and 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 others to think through? If we, that scenario, and if we are able to bring more kids back into the building. How we address that and come up with a plan with respect to classrooms. Classroom lunch with possible parent volunteers and so on and so forth, can can we think about all these different creativities there? Absolutely. I I think we are. I I think, you know, and if others in the committee, please jump in, but I I think, you know, our goal has always been to provide as much in person learning as we can. And if we can, if we can make changes. Over the next couple of months because the circumstances change. That fits with what we've been saying from the beginning here and is something that we're, you know, that we need to, that we will willing to work with. And and I think that, you know, the difference between the fall and where we sit right now is that there wasn't, nothing changed in the fall. The big change here is there's a vaccine and there's a plan for teachers to be and and staff at the schools to be able to get it. The question is now, when are we going to be able to execute on that and what, what does that allow us to do differently within the building?
Can I say a couple of words? Hi, my name's Caitlin Brosnan, I have two kids in the Denne School, third grader and a first grader, and I have a three-year-old too at home. I just wanted to share along with what Angela and Danielle said about just looking into the kids having. You know, looking out for their social well-being and their mental well-being. I've noticed my very athletic third grader, just very sluggish, not himself. My first grader struggles with remote learning, it's very difficult to keep. These young kids on the computer and at this point, I am very much more concerned about what this is doing to them for an entire year so far. I kept them remote to start, so I am very cautious with. You know, what's going on with this virus and I don't want to put my kids at risk and I know all these, these parents don't want to put their kids at risk, but. I do feel like, you know, these emotional and, you know, struggles that these families are having with all this does need to be considered. I don't know if you've looked at Sacred Heart Elementary School, but they've had very good success, I know they've gone, you know, below the six feet, but. The kids are wearing a mask and I think that's, you know, if you're, that's part of the reason why you're wearing a mask, you can get a little bit closer and it. They've, they haven't had many more cases than you've had, they've gone remote for one week, but they have, it was more precautionary and. You know, it's not spreading, this isn't spreading in their classroom, it's not spreading in our classroom at Denne. We're very lucky for that and I do think that everybody's doing the best they can with it, but I do think there's, there can be more done. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Other questions?
Actually, sorry, I have one more thing. So with all that said, you have understood how the parents sort of feel. Have there been any talks in terms of having possibly a committee and parent sort of maybe resource meeting where. There can be information shared, I think one of the biggest things is the lack of communication that parents feel that, you know, we're kind of out of the loop, we don't know what's going on, we don't know if there's a plan. And at the end of the day, there needs to be a plan and that's what we want and that's what we need to hear, that is that there is a plan in action, so. Just in terms of, would you ever consider maybe doing like a parent resource that could meet with the school committee? You know, maybe weekly or, you know, monthly or so, to go over options, to go over creative ideas, to go over parent feedback. Are parents being considered in all of this?
Parent, parents are always considered and we can, we can certainly, we can certainly do more frequent check-ins. If you would like, we did, we did do that back in in the summer and had a, had sort of resource meeting where we were able to just sort of focus on that. So we can certainly figure out how how best to deal with that as. We're going to go through a think a period of time where there's going to be a lot of stuff changing and gives us the opportunity to therefore. Consider ideas and come up with an actionable plan that. We have a, that we will have a reasonable chance of executing on.
And I only mention that because as I said before, time is of the essence and the school years, the time is running out, our children are being affected and. We want everyone to stay safe, including the faculty, the staff, the students, but time is of the essence, you know, and I think that that's what. I feel is the most precious with all of this is, you know, and we want everyone to be safe and healthy. We also don't want the children to suffer anymore, but I did, I emailed you a question, but I don't, you didn't respond. But I did was when I was wondering, I'm curious as to can Denneville make a decision? That is based on like what is best for its community outside of what Kingston and Halifax do?
Yes. We, I mean, so I thought I did respond, but maybe that was someone else who asked the same question. The, I mean, we. So the short answer is yes. Pretty clear that we look at things, especially during all of this, for what's best for for Denne and for Plimpton. That said, there's going to be other times where it makes sense for us to work with the other school committees. And and try and do something coordinated across the district. For instance, we were talking at the beginning of this about the Wednesday, alternating Wednesdays and the potential challenges that that could have if. Silver Lake was able to do that and then we, we didn't. And now you have childcare issues for families that have kids in multiple parts of the school, it's also the reason why. You know, we, they, we coordinated the cohorts to try and make sure that if you have students across the district. That you're in cohort A, you're in cohort A, all of the kids are, so that you don't have, you're not shuffling all that around, so. We do a lot of things together, but you know, when, as we're evaluating what we do for the Denne as things change. It may be different here, it may be different at KIS, maybe different in Halifax, and you've got to make those decisions based on. Buildings that they have, the number of students that they have coming in, the number of teachers that they have, you know, because some of, some of those schools have more. Than Kingston, I think have more resources within the school as far as bodies to do things. You know, so you can move that around a little bit easier, Denne were pretty lean, so that's why. One person is out, it can cause a ripple effect in order to try and deal with it because we just don't have the bench to do with that, so. We will, we will continue to to take input and to look at what's right for Denne.
Well, in terms of. I was saying in terms of what you were saying about the leanness of the community, well, and I think that that's maybe the parent consideration in terms of like parent. Helpers, getting parents back in could be, could absolutely alleviate some of those issues, just saying, sorry.
Yep, no, I mean, we'll continue to look at all of these items and we'll continue to. To to figure out the best way forward.
Could I just say a quick word? So, I mean. I'm, I might get a little flustered in this, you know, I don't feel that everyone is sacrificing, this is a really hard time. I haven't hugged my mother since August, so that every day I can come in and teach the children safely. Because if I'm out, it is a huge ripple effect and many of us teachers are also doing the same thing. So I just want you to know that we are doing everything we can in school and out of school. To to try to help the kids with their mental health, with their learning, we are giving up. Everything in order to be there for your children and I just, I want everyone to know that. All of us are doing this, I'm sorry that I'm getting, it's, it is really hard. And we are all, and I know you as parents are doing your best and, you know. We all want the kids back, believe me, it would be so much easier if they were all back in school. Because teaching on the computer and preparing all the things that they need is. Multiplicatively more difficult, so as teachers, I mean, I I'm speaking for everyone at this point. We are working harder than we ever have and I understand that on a computer, it may not look like that. But we are doing everything we can to try to help them learn and to be happy and. And just to overall try to help them be good humans and. Deal with everything that they're dealing with, so I understand how frustrating it would be and, you know, if you feel that you don't have the information, but. You know, from our point of view, there's just no more new information. And, but we are working our best, I I I give you a word of honor that we are trying so hard to do everything we can for the kids.
Mrs. Goodwin, I just wanted to respond to, I, please know that nobody is, nobody is questioning the dedication. Of the Denne Elementary School teaching staff.
No, I appreciate that.
And any remote teaching that has gone on that I've heard of with all my friends. Within not only Massachusetts, but nationally, the the dedication to the Denne staff and teachers is not being questioned at all. I see, I hear singing, I see, hear freeze dances, I hear smiling, teachers are going above and beyond, it's so much more work for them and dedication, so I just want to. If if you're hearing some parents who are questioning about the planning around in more in person, it is not at all related to. Dissatisfaction or in any way a reflection of extreme gratitude to the teachers and staff.
Alright, so I just, I want to step in then and say, you know, if if you feel like you've been left out of the loop, I apologize. We've been having meetings twice a month that are publicly posted and notified. And we're trying to take care of the students of our town, but we're also trying to take care of that staff that you just complimented so graciously. We want to make sure that any moves we make are going to be based on science, not on opinion, not on feelings. We understand the long-term implications that this could have, especially for the youngest students, we've looked at the research and the data. From other times that students have been out of school, this is not the first time that schools have been shut down in American history, not even close. And we do have data that we can learn from that, and we do know what students are most highly impacted by these closures. And you're right, it is the youngest of our students. The planning goes well beyond how we're going to get our kids back to school at Denne. It 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 goes well beyond just looking at September and saying, well, we're, we're just throwing our hands up in in this school year and we're waiting till September. And I apologize if that hasn't been conveyed to you more clearly. You know, I just this weekend had a meeting with the Chair of the House Education Committee from Beacon Hill, Alice Peish. And we're working on getting additional funding for school, summer school programming for our students. And that wouldn't be just for kids who are underachieving, it would also be for social emotional supports. And try and make up some of these gaps that we're seeing in the education of our students because of the pandemic. We also have major traction on getting year-round education. Since at this point, one of the biggest times where our students show a decline in their learning is over summer vacation. We have regression, every teacher can tell you September and October, we reteach, we reteach. So we are looking right now at potentially having year-round education in in Massachusetts to try and address that. Australia does it, Delaware does it, and their students graduate with almost two years more education than our kids do because of the lack of regression over the summer. So we could make up the deficits we're currently seeing because of the pandemic for those youngest students if we adopt year-round education in Massachusetts. And we're also asking the state legislature to really look at what California did two years ago. Where they flipped the school start times statewide between elementary school and secondary school. All the brain-based research ever on this subject tells us that our elementary school kids should be going to school earlier. That they learn better at those earlier hours and then they should be getting out earlier so they have the time to go out and play and be with their friends. And as someone who works with secondary education students, I can tell you they would benefit from not coming to school until nine o'clock in the morning as well. So we are working big time on these initiatives, these big idea things that we would have never gotten traction with in the past. Because of the unfortunate circumstances we find ourselves in. You know, our new Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Lynch has said many times that if we don't learn some really useful skills. Because of the situation we've been thrust into, it's a, it's a terrible tragedy and a wasted opportunity. So we are doing our best, we are doing our damnedest to get these kids back when it's safe to do so. But we do have a moral obligation to everyone in our community, including those teachers that were just praised so, so eloquently. So thank you very much for that and I just wanted to make sure, I apologized if we weren't being a little bit more transparent with our planning process.
So couple, couple things. One, this will clearly be an agenda item in a month when we meet again in February. This is going to be a regular agenda item for us to talk through as we, as we move along. I will talk offline about sort of the best way to have a parent update, most likely we'll just do a Zoom. With myself and maybe Peter and, and maybe one or two other folks for families to check in, we'll do something like that in between. So in two weeks, I'm not going to do it in a week because I'm not, don't think I'm going to have anything else to talk about in a week. But we will do sort of an intermediate check-in between school committee meetings. Certainly happy to do that and you know, and for those of you who know me or have, have gotten to know me over the last eight months of fun here. You know, I'm going to tell you what I can tell you and if I don't know the answer, I'm going to tell you I don't know the answer. And we will continue to, to work on this to try and do the best that we can for our teachers and for our students to make sure that we. We limit the damage, right? I mean, we can't, we're not going to make anything right here, we can't, this isn't right. So we will, you know, we certainly understand the concerns and we'll keep, we'll keep working on that.
John, if, if I may interject, I just want to, just to confirm what you were saying. So the planning and like just the discussion, it won't happen for another month? And just to point out, because I, I feel like everyone has already mentioned so much can change.
I, I mentioned earlier, we have a Bennett Health and so the, the school committee has a regular cadence for their meetings. Our next meeting, I think is the twenty-second of February or something like that. Yeah, twenty-second of February, so that, that, that is already scheduled and, and we will, we will do that. In between today and the twenty-second of February, there will be at least one meeting for the Bennett Health and Safety Advisory Committee. Which is the opportunity for the school committee and the, the Bennett staff to talk and to talk about. Stuff like this and what else is going on in the schools and other ideas.
I don't mean to introduce, are there any parents involved with that committee at all? Just curious, there are.
But, but I, but what I'm saying is I also would, I also will schedule a meeting. Two weeks out or something to that effect, which I'll put up on the Friends of the Denit and we'll do a Zoom and it will be free form. And we can, we can talk through what we're thinking, what's going on, where we're at. And we may have lots to talk about or not much may have changed, I don't know, but we'll schedule the meeting so we have that contact. And we can keep that cadence going as we, as we continue to move forward here so that we make sure that we're sharing information. As quickly as we can and should something come up that is not anticipated, that, that's the game changer. We can throw a meeting on because the, the easy part about that, if we're having a discussion and it's not a school committee meeting per se. We can just throw something up on there and people who want to attend can attend, we don't have to notice the meeting and do all of this sort of stuff. Because it's not the, it's, it's just, it's more an informal meeting. So I've heard you say that you don't feel like you're getting the communication, Mr. Fraser spoke to that too. We'll get you some more.
To be completely honest, it's not just me though, it's, it's the community of moms that I am connected with everyone.
Was, it wasn't just to you, it was, I'm hearing that based on the, on our discussion tonight. And so we will do, we will have more communication until you guys don't want to see me anymore.
Thank you, John, we appreciate that and I just wanted to say thank you to all the teachers and the staff. And I'm not going to get upset like Liz did, but we appreciate it and I will, and I did just want to, to ask. Or just to, I think sometimes there, the miscommunication between the school committee or the parents or whatnot. And I also like to hear that, that Dr. Prue and Mr. Veneto back the school committees. Recommendation of staying six feet and it, it's nice, it would. I don't know, hear that everybody's on the same page there and that that's really what everybody thinks is to the best. I think that sometimes the miscommunication and the pieces that people think, and this is just what I hear from. That the school committee overrides anything that is put out by even the principal, the superintendent. Or any sort of guide that, like even if say they thought that that was the way to go. Three feet full-time or four days a week that. That it can be shut down or that thought can be shut down. So I would just, it would, thank you, just, we like to hear from that everybody's on the same page in the school as well. I think it's just helpful to the parents.
Yeah, go ahead, Peter.
No, that's a very thoughtful question, Sarah, thank you. And honestly, I think we have had such success this year and to John's point earlier, I didn't think we would make it to Halloween. I, I think the path that we've chosen and the efforts that everybody has taken, it's proven it's working. We've had no transmission in school, it hasn't always been the most convenient, but what we're doing right now, it's working. It, it's working well enough, it's not exactly what everybody wants, I totally appreciate that and I respect that. I think six feet is the way to go and if that's what the CDC is telling me, there are certainly much more, more intelligent people working there than I am. And, and I, I respect that path, but I do appreciate the question, Sarah, thank you.
Okay, and it wasn't meant as, it, I don't know, it's just nice to hear when everybody from all angles gives their opinion. Or shares because it does help the parents understand because obviously we all want our kids back in school. But it's not that simple and I get that. And sometimes it is hard when we hear this school's doing four days a week and they're doing fine. And then when you really think about sometimes three feet, that that would. Totally incre, you know, it's just a lot, it's a lot for everybody and it's nice to hear everybody's opinions.
Well, I'm not, I'm not going to speak for Dr. Prue, but from my years of experience in, in, in. My limited months of experience with dealing with a global pandemic, this, we're doing pretty good, we're, we're doing, we're doing very well. And I don't see an immediate need to, to knock that apple cart over until, until I see a reason to. So honestly, right now, we're, we're doing great, staff's doing great, but also the, the kids are doing fantastic. They're keeping their masks on, they're keeping space as much as possible, it's challenging trying to keep five and six-year-old kids. From climbing on each other because that's what they do, that they're, they're kids. But honestly, th- this is, this is proven to be far more successful than I ever anticipated when, at the outset of all of this. So, and that, that's praise to staff, praise to families that are doing the appropriate thing. Student woke up with a hundred-degree fever, I'm going to keep him home just to be safe, that's awesome. And the way that this is working, it's the community effort, it's not just what teachers are doing, it's not just what I'm doing. It's everybody working together and it, it, it's yielding results.
Yes, I just wanted to quickly say again, I know I've thanked teachers individually and staff, everybody's done an amazing job. I think that everybody kind of takes their feelings to heart a little bit and the parents just want to be heard a little bit. But the teacher and staff, we appreciate everything you guys have done. So that's, I just wanted to say that, thank you.
Could I actually just jump in here, sorry? I actually am a parent and I have a sixth grader at the school, I also have a high schooler. And the cases are much more so at the high school unfortunately. But I, I just want to let you guys know from the parent perspective, that serving on the Health and Safety Advisor Committee. How much thought and effort and diligence and hard work is going into home life, not just school life. But there really is a lot of talk in that committee, so maybe we are not doing a good job of expressing that. And sharing that information to your point Danielle, I think. You know, just listening to some of the meetings like Jason was talking about, I don't, I know it's more work, but I would be more than willing to like, you know, scribe something of our next meeting. And maybe send out a little bulletin like, hey, here are some updates that have been worked on, here's things we have discussed. Just so that you know that it is being discussed, I think, you know, I hear to your point about the communication piece. I just don't want you to think it's not happening because it really is, it's just maybe not being expressed in a way because, you know, we're so in it. Sometimes I think we kind of forget, we have to share that information a little bit more, but I'm sure we can kind of get together at our next meeting. And approach how to do that in a better way for everybody.
I agree and, and I. Sort of opportune time to have this whole discussion because I think we're in a very different place today than we were even, you know, even a month ago. There's a lot more changing, both for the good and for the bad. But that's where it's an opportunity for us to, to, to continue to, to look at the most recent data that we have, the most recent information. And be able to start figuring out what next steps are, whether we maintain a course or whether we look to make some changes. In order to, to, again, one of our goals was to do as much in-person learning as we can do in a safe manner. So that hasn't changed and we're going to keep working on that. We do have some other items to cover tonight, including a budget, which should be fun. But we'll have another Health and Safety Meeting and we'll follow that meeting with an open meeting for parents to join us. So thank you for, everyone for attending, for offering your thoughts, for sending along some emails to, to help sort of round this. And yeah, we work very closely with, with Peter and Dr. Prue. On a regular basis, I mean, this is, the school committee doesn't do its own thing and then we're, we're all, we're all together in this and that includes the parents too. So thank you for everything that the parents are doing, we wouldn't be here, we would have been out by October, by Halloween. As Peter said, if, if we didn't have the parents really living up to, to this and, and helping with their students. And when they're remote, but also keeping kids home when they're not feeling well, that's really a key to this, so thank you for, for all of that. Okay. So your folks are always, you're welcome to stay on if you, if you need to go get some dinner, feel free to do that. But we're going to, we're going to dive back into the meeting here, so thank you. So standing committees, administrator review.
We have a meeting scheduled before our February meeting, John.
Okay, that's right.
Twenty-second. And we'll reorganize them too, I believe, so.
Okay. We already spoke to negotiations, Union Thirty-One, have we, it's all a blur at this point, I don't think we've had a meeting last night.
No meeting scheduled, no.
PAC, Dan, do you have any?
No, they, there was no meeting this past month due to the holidays, they canceled it.
You guys want to have a real fun time, we just had a policy subcommittee meeting at four o'clock today. So if I'm looking a little bleary-eyed, it's because Jason made us go through seven hundred and thirty-four policies, all with different letters. No, not that many, but there's a lot, so for committee members, look forward to that for February, we're going to get to do the first read. Quite a, quite a number of policies, so I don't, and I know we're going to have some future meetings because we had to hold a few things and so on, so. Capital Improvement, I'm just going to use this line item to note that we got a big silver box put up on top of the Denit. To replace one of the big units that's up there, one of the six, which we were luckily able to leverage. CARES Act funds for that, that went up last week, I believe, so does everyone have heat now, Peter? Everyone's a little warmer, good. Jason, anything on the legislative side?
I have a lot, I think I just shared part of my legislative. Report with you, but because there is such a focus right now among so many members of our constituency. On time on learning and potential learning gaps caused by the pandemic. We really believe with the legislature up at the State House, between educators and between parents. We can use this momentum to push summer school reform in the state to again, offer. Some coursework for students, not only with their academic situation, but also with social emotional situations as well. And maybe even expand it beyond just compensatory type services to enrichment type services. Now that people are seeing how important it is to keep that mind moving, even during extended closures such as summer vacation. Which is also brought up for the first time, I can recall a serious discussion about moving to year-round education in Massachusetts. So I did mention that this is the model in Australia and also in Delaware. It's still a one hundred eighty-day school year, but the way they run it is six weeks on, two weeks off. Six weeks on, four weeks off. So the longest period of time a student is ever out of school is just four weeks. And usually during that intercession, students who need some catch-up to make sure that they can maintain their grades. And they're actually learning something before they move on to the next item in the curriculum is secure, they can use that to catch up. And it's also used as enrichment time as well for students who, who want to delve into something that might not be covered by the traditional curriculum. Australia's managed to do it and still incorporate all of the country's major holidays into those times off. But again, research has shown that their students graduate with two to two and a half years more education than American students. Because they have no regression at all from their K to twelve education. We are also again pressuring the state legislature to look at school start times to make sure that when our students are back in school full-time. Those hours in the classroom, the nine hundred ninety hours per year are being used to their fullest. We know that high school students at seven fifteen in the morning, their brains are still secreting serotonin and telling them to go back to bed. And they're not at their best for learning, so we're hoping again, with the parents' interest in trying to catch our students back up. In time on learning and effective hours in classrooms in person, that will have the support of our citizens in Plimpton. And statewide for these initiatives. Governor comes out with his first version of the state budget on Wednesday. I have some inside tracks that say the state budget is actually doing much, much better than most people would think. And again, I met with some of our friends down on Capitol Hill. And I also had breakfast this, this week with John Keller. And I'm getting the same messages from all of my sources that the federal government is putting together a relief package for states. Very much like they did after the financial crisis of two thousand eight, two thousand nine. That will backfill the state education budgets if there happens to be any deficit this year. I was also reminded by Chairwoman Peish, who's the Education Chairwoman, that we will be held harmless. If we have any enrollment decline in, in our district. However, she did remind me that we might see a bit of a bump in kids who might have been held back from kindergarten this year. So we need to be thinking of that locally as we budget for kindergarten and first grade next year. We get some super solid numbers as quickly as we can.
Okay. Any questions on that? All right, Chris, single signature warrants?
After our last meeting, we had warrants signed by the Superintendent John Williamson. On December sixteenth, there was one CARES Act warrant signed for thirty thousand two hundred sixty-eight dollars and ninety-six cents. On December twenty-eighth, we had eight regular warrants for two hundred fifty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars and forty cents. And today, we got signatures again for seven warrants totaling forty-eight thousand two hundred thirty-six dollars and fifty-three cents. Including one CARES Act warrant for a hundred twenty-five dollars and seventy-six cents. We're near the end of our CARES Act spending until we hear otherwise, or we hear with the next distribution of funds will be. So thank you for the signatures.
And, and just to note on that, that there was an extension to the period that you could submit CARES Act. And, and just a note on that, that there was an extension to the period that you could submit CARES Act, uh, requests. That said, um, you know, we, we weren't sure that that was going to come. And so the money was, the money, money was spent in December in order to, to make sure that we didn't leave much on the table. So there's maybe a little bit left there, but it's, we're not about big dollars. Jason?
So I've, I've had some, um, questions come to me from other school committees and school districts about the reimbursement coming from either the state or the county for the CARES funds that we have spent. Do we have any lag on being reimbursed for those funds that we've spent or are we caught up?
We are not caught up, I don't think. Um, there's been, it, it's come, it's been coming as a trickle, as I understand from the town coordinator. So isn't that, that, that how you see it, Christine?
Yeah, and that's what I'm hearing from the other towns. And, um, when Silver Lake was able to start submitting, requests for reimbursement to the towns, we have not seen any receipts come in yet.
So we're waiting. We've got a few, we've got a few larger items that were put through there and, uh, you know, we you're getting smaller checks. So, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll see. Uh, I'll, I'll have a meeting with the town coordinator tomorrow. So I'll be following up and getting an update on that too.
Now, obviously the growing concern there is, um, trying to make sure we're reimbursed fully by June thirty or even sooner so we can offset in some areas of the budget.
Correct. And it's been, there were a few spots where we actually spent town money instead of school money, but the bulk of it was money that was paid out from the school, like the thirty thousand we just, that was just mentioned. So that was for the rooftop unit. And, um, you know, that was, that was spent out of the, out of the school funds. So. We did not have a Denit Health and Safety Advisory Committee meeting, um, between our last, uh, meeting, but we, as we were talking about before, we will. So I'll get that, I'll work to get that on the calendar, uh, probably tomorrow. I think when I'm done with this meeting, I'm done with the computer for the night. Amy, or do we have any CASA update or Sarah, if you wanted to offer anything?
I wasn't at the last CASA meeting, but Sarah's really good about emailing stuff out. So, um, they're not going ahead with the winter festival, obviously with everything going on. Um, but they are still doing the raffle baskets, which is great. They're going to put them on display at the Mayflower Mercantile at the end of February. And everybody can buy tickets and put in for the raffles then. Um, and the next meeting I have is two nine. Anything to add, Sarah? That's good.
Um, yeah, that's pretty much it. We're gonna do the raffle baskets. Hopefully we'll be a successful, either Saturday or Sunday, the twenty-eighth or twenty-ninth of February will be at Mayflower Mercantile. Plus we'll do Venmo and Facebook and email to sell raffle tickets. And, um, what else? We had some Denit masks made up that came through and we're going to be putting masks out. And I don't know what else we got. We did an enrichment program. I don't know if you spoke about that at the last one, Amy. I don't know if we did half of it. Then, actually, no, it was in December, it was before break. The, the gentleman from Animal Experience who did one at the library came and safely did an enrichment during the kids while they have, uh, lunch for like fifteen minutes for each lunch for, you know, cohort, uh, A and then, or A and C and D, whatever, two, two days. Um, and the kids loved it. So I was excited that we had an enrichment program. We've been doing staff luncheons, not a ton more to report because we're kind of limited, but we are keeping on.
And I would also, I was just going to note that Sarah attended the Board of Selectmen meeting, uh, one, two weeks ago. And, um, because the selectmen were sort of just, they're going out and reaching out to a lot of the different, uh, committees and groups and, and it was nice that the selectmen reached out and wanted to hear about what CASA was doing and, and, and all of that. So that was, that was great for Sarah. Thanks for doing that. And, uh, it was also good that, that we have a selectman that are sort of want to hear about what's going on in the schools and, and want to be part of that.
Absolutely. And now, and last weekend, my son and I volunteered for the food pantry and I'm passing it on to him. There's no really need for a couple of us to be there. So he's gonna do, um, I think she's gonna do Tuesday, Thursday. So he's, my son Dylan's gonna help on Tuesdays weekly, uh, to give her a hand over there. So that was good because I wouldn't have known about it unless I was on the meeting. So that's good.
Thank you. Mr. Benito. Where's yours?
Thanks, John. And just a note to Sarah, the, uh, the gentleman with the animals was fantastic. And I made a quick exit out of the cafeteria as soon as the snake emerged out of the box. I had had about enough of that.
Okay.
Well, on Wednesdays, but they can bring in outsiders.
The, the kids loved it. That was great. Going straight from the agenda, from a school update perspective, John, you, you already touched upon the new rooftop unit was installed last week. It went flawlessly. Things are, are running nicely. While we had the giant crane at the school, uh, I made the decision that we probably could take down the satellite dish that had been on the roof for thirty years. I don't think we were getting any cable programming from it. So it, it, it was one of those things that it's probably just adding to the stress of the roof. So, uh, it's down and, and we'll figure out what we're going to do with it soon. I think we've spoken at length tonight about the different things that are happening at school. People are working hard, families are working hard. We're, we're making this thing work. The one point from the agenda from a staff update perspective, Mrs. Barlow, who would currently or had been our math interventions took over in grade four for Mrs. Reynolds. I was able to fill that math interventions position with, uh, Ms. Paige Sylvia. Paige is a recent Bridgewater State grad. She had done some work over at Kingston Intermediate and is doing a really nice job. So we're, we're very lucky to have her. And, um, I think it's going to be a, a, a good working relationship moving forward.
Excellent. Any questions for Peter?
Yep. So Peter, I saw you, uh, nodding in your understanding of, uh, the potential situation we have in our K and one enrollments next year. Have you gotten any feelers yet or are you just starting to think about that at this point?
I've reached out to Town Hall as I typically do at this time of year to see if the census is going to lend us much information. It, it, it gives a decent baseline. Um, but February first, we are going to send out a pre-registration form. That information that we get from, from that particular form is, I'd be willing to say about ninety to ninety-five percent accurate. We had, I believe it was eleven families that we were anticipating joining K this year until everything kind of fell apart. So it's going to be some, some personal conversations with families, which that, that's absolutely fine. I'd rather have those anyway to find out what are you, what are you planning on doing for next year? Are you thinking kindergarten? Are you thinking grade one? So it's something that, um, has been an agenda item for, for all of the elementaries across the board. So it's, it's, um, it's going to be interesting. But I, I think the sooner we have that information, like I said, if we send that out on Monday, I anticipate we'll get information back very quickly. And, um, if certain decisions have to be made that are not what we would consider normal, we'll, we'll, we'll work it out and figure it out.
And I think we'll probably have more of that discussion as we look at the budget numbers, because I think there were some numbers in there that you were looking at for first grade and kindergarten.
Correct.
Okay, anything else?
I think that's going to do it, John.
Uh, Christine, should we go through the financial?
Sure, we can do that. You know, the financial is in your package, right? And if you'll notice, the financial still looks pretty good. It's been a little uneventful. The, the financial is doing just fine. There's only one deficit on there and it was for, um, the bill that we paid for our indemnification policy for the school committee when they act in the capacity as within, with Union Thirty-One. There's a deficit of thirty-five dollars and forty-one cents. I had missed making the, the change for Plimpton's percentage of the shared cost increasing. So I, I have made sure I've checked out for next, for the next year's budget. All of our special education accounts have sufficient balances to get to the end of the year. As you mentioned earlier about the CARES Act funding, we were running additional warrants to, in order to work with the town for them to meet their deadlines for submitting for reimbursement. And then I think it was the last week of December when he found out that it was being ex- extended. So now we're just going to be in a regular warrant cycle. And then once we hear if there, there be additional allotment of funds from the town or from Plymouth County to the town, we'll then move forward with additional warrants. But that's it for right now, unless there are any questions.
Can you just remind me again, we're expecting, uh, what for, uh, in, in the Voke line?
I think we're in the forty thousand dollar range. One of the things that's been a little, um, has varied for us is actually the transportation for the out-of-district vocational. Because our, our two schools that we send kids to for Norfolk County and Bristol County are actually not going all in the same days. So without maybe whatever savings in the days, but that's not the case. We're actually going, because they started at different times, we're going many days. So I tried to be cautious and account for all possibilities. So the forty thousand is probably, that would be the low end of what would, what would be returning to the town.
And, and out, out of that will be the, the buildings up. So, you know, that's, uh, and, and so we'll, we'll see how, how that all lines up. Do we, um, do we also feel, I mean, how, how, how the utility has been going in comparison to what we anticipated? Are they a little high? I mean, that's kind of what we
They're actually, all the utilities of all the schools are to doing okay. And, um, one of the things that Jill will talk about is that I have not made a change to the budget. I'm actually reflecting all the utilities at the FY twenty-one level before we made additional cuts. And that's just because I'm being cautious. I haven't seen the full impact yet of windows being open and just whatever's had to be done to run the building. I'm not in the position yet to make a decision on how much we could cut for our utilities. So hopefully as we get a little deeper into the budget season, have a better sense of what the winter bills are going to look like, especially for gas, for the heating of the building.
And, and I've got a, I've got a, um, catch up with the, with, uh, the FinCom Chair. My guess is that we may want to do the same thing that we did this year, which was to plan on everything being back to normal. And then with the understanding that that means that we do not have a buffer if it isn't. Because, you know, it, we, because we don't have a crystal ball with that. So we're just making up numbers when we try and, and sort of say, oh, well, we need this, well, we need that, we need the other thing. Now there may be, you know, there may be some desire to do that, or, or do we just focus on saying, let's make the budget, assuming that things are back to normal with the understanding that we may need to come back to the town for money, um, to, to offset later.
The budget was drafted with keeping in mind that we would be returning full in school for next year. There are, there are some allotments for additional supplies and cleaning items in case we need to keep still keeping up with that. But other than that, we
Right.
We're ready to go back.
So. For so many reasons, right? Okay. Any other questions with the, um, with the financial report? Okay. Thank you, Christine. Jill, your turn to talk. I'm done.
Okay, so first up is the FY twenty-two preliminary budget presentation. And in your package, you'll see some familiar charts that we have provided you with again this year so that you can see in particular enrollment numbers because they have an impact obviously on our budgetary needs. You will not find the charter and private school numbers yet. Uh, we anticipate having those for our February meeting. That data is not yet available to us. But if you look at homeschool enrollment for, um, for this year, homeschool from last year has increased in Plimpton by seven. And if you look at, uh, Plimpton residents in, at the secondary level, it has increased by one student since last year. So we see an increase in homeschool enrollment this year. In Halifax, Kingston and Plimpton student enrollment chart, you'll see that, uh, Plimpton enrollment grades K through six has gone down by seventeen. And earlier in the year, when we submitted our October first information, we talked about some of the phenomenon that was occurring across the state. The increase in homeschooling, the, uh, red shirt earning of kindergarten students, keeping them back a year because of the pandemic is not something particular to Plimpton. It is a trend across the straight estate and it is uncertain to what extent this will have an impact on our, um, funding and our, our numbers. If it, if it will at all, because it's such a consistent, um, issue across all school systems. And then, uh, grades seven through twelve, you'll see, uh, in terms of Plimpton students, there's been a decline of about six students in grade seven through twelve in Plimpton. The next chart outlines the different types of out-of-district vocational technical schools that our students attend. Plimpton currently has one student, um, in attending and we anticipate that that student will return next year. We'll talk more about out-of-district vocational and, uh, the budget in a moment. And then finally, the last chart, our students leaving the district using school choice. That has remained the same in Plimpton since last year. So it was one student last year and it is one student again this year. So if you take a look in your packet, you'll find a preliminary budget for the Denit Elementary School. Just to review the process, uh, the budget process included input and presentations from Steve Pello regarding technology-related requests. Melissa Farrell, who detailed our curriculum needs and Marie Grable, who provided the special education overview last month. In addition, Peter Venito was asked to prepare a level service budget, um, with input from staff and Principal Venito, uh, well, has also, um, been asked to work with Matt Jerky to forward a list of potential capital projects for consideration prior to the budget hearing. So we may have a, a few capital projects to consider, um, for the, for the long, for the long term, not necessarily anything that has to be done immediately, but we wanted to start that process of beginning to project and anticipate capital needs as well.
And
Principal
Just one, one thought on that. Um, Peter, once that's, once that's sort of prepared, it probably would be a good thing for you, Matt, and myself to catch up at the Denit and kind of walk through not just some of the, the, the smaller items, but I know we have some pretty big ticket items there, both from a school committee perspective, but also putting on my other hat for town properties. I mean, I think we know we have siding, we have roof and, um, I'm now increasingly concerned about big boxes on top of the roof. If they're thirty thousand a pop. And we may need to try and make sure we have a good picture of all of this and then try and think of some creative ways in order to budget for those so that we can, make sure we have money aside when we need it. Uh, and perhaps even outside of the school budget, which is probably where it belongs anyways, whereby you put money aside, let's say, and, you know, we keep it there. And if we don't use it that year, it's still there for the next year. Because when one of the units goes, we need to have the money to, to do it. But do we want to just be replacing units if they're still have life in them? You know, these are the sorts of things that I think we need to get a handle on because it's a big building. And usually when we have to fix something there, it ends up being decent money.
Happy to do so.
Thank you, Jill.
So, um, when we say level service budgets, uh, what we're asking Principal Venito to consider is what would it take financially to main our current staffing and our programs? And he was asked to consider what was needed to support our students' academic and developmental needs as well as maintain class sizes and any structures necessary for effective instruction. He has provided a narrative in your packet, which also highlights the ways in which his budgetary requests align with our district core values and help to meet his school improvement goals. Christine then took those requests and added additional components for our budget, such as salaries, utilities and transportation. And as she mentioned, the substitute utilities and homeless transportation lines may appear to be an increase, but they're actually stating that the FY twenty-one level. We were able to offset one kindergarten position with twenty-two thousand, eighty-seven dollars anticipated through the REAP grant. This is less than last year and this has an impact on our percent increase in teaching services when you look at that line item. Last year, our grant was approximately twenty-five thousand, uh, dollars. So it's about a three thousand dollar difference. Given the financial uncertainties, um, we face, I also asked, uh, Principal Venito to begin to consider and prioritize any additional needs outside of level services. At this time, he, uh, he has requested the addition of a building substitute due to the difficulties obtaining substitutes this year and the anticipated need for next year as a consideration outside of this budget. So it's not worked into this budget, but he has listed it in his narrative for consideration. Another important consideration is that we are working to try to get, uh, kindergarten and grade one numbers as early as possible, as you've already hit upon. Due to a number of parents that did not send their students to kindergarten this fall due to the pandemic, the elementary principals, as, um, Principal Venito has stated, are sending out pre-registration forms in February and will be asking parents to complete registration earlier than usual to help us anticipate, uh, staffing needs. So we are aware of that potential, uh, fluctuation or increase that could occur as a result of, uh, students not attending kindergarten this year. We are assuming and hoping for a full in-person return with this budget. We assume we will need to continue some mitigation strategies. It does not include additional staffing to provide remote instruction if that is required in addition to in-person instruction. That's important to note. Uh the budget in your packet tonight contains both a summary and detailed pages. So first, I'm going to point out a few things in the summary. Uh in the summary, you'll know that there is a reduction of about uh of twenty thousand dollars for the school choice offset and a three thousand redoc- three thousand dollar reduction for the REAP grant offset. Out of district vocational is at um FY twenty two level. We have one student that we anticipate will support three placements. If needed, we will not know the impact of additional students until the April first deadline. So that's just an estimate um and we'll know more in April. The overall budget has an increase of three point nine seven percent or one hundred and forty seven thousand and five hundred and sixty dollars more than last year. The increase for regular day or operating budget is six point two percent about one hundred fifty one thousand four hundred and seven more than last year. The special education ha- has a slight decrease of three thousand eight hundred and forty seven dollars or point three two percent. Circuit breaker for this budget is figured at fifty five percent, and each five percent change for circuit breaker is five thousand nine hundred nineteen dollars and forty cents. The budget does not yet reflect shared costs. We do anticipate an increase to the budget once these costs have been added. Payroll is is seventy two percent of the operating budget. So now, if you were to go to the detail pages, I want to point out some things that may stand out to you, or you might like some additional information on. On page one, if you look at function code lines, um eleven hundred legal fees and indemnification, there is an increase, costs have gone up. Uh indemnification is for the Union Thirty One policy. On page two, the twenty three hundred code substitutes, as we've already mentioned, are funded at the FY twenty one level. Uh fund code twenty four hundred, you will notice the textbook expense. This amount primarily reflects half of the estimated cost of the new English Language Arts program. You may recall that Melissa recommended a two-year split for this expense, and that our current program will sunset. Because so we are in need of this um literacy or uh English Language Arts program. On page three, um line two four oh five reflect movement of some formerly tech expenses that are more accurately reflected as instructional software. These costs has have risen as increased subscriptions to support remote learning. And we anticipate um holding on to these subscriptions uh at least into the upcoming year as they have been a valuable support and resource. Um tech lines two four five one show an overall increase as presented by Steve Pello. And uh just to note, because it's hard to imagine how we could still have technology expenses because we bought laptops, for example, or Chromebooks. Uh but remember that CARES only allowed for items that were not budgeted um and CARES allowed for items that were necessary because they were a health mitigation item or because um they helped with remote learning needs such as those devices, but things like arrow hives and things of that nature, things that would have been our in our budget. Those could not be paid for with CARES. So we still have um technology needs despite um the the support we receive with CARES funding, and we are appreciative of that.
Jill, can I make a comment there? I'd also remind the committee members that as part of the budget process last year, we paid for absent of the pandemic, we paid for uh the I think Chromebooks and some other technology expense. We took out of the budget and we paid for it with a transfer from money that we had uh left over from last year, went to the special town meeting as a warrant article. And so when you look at that number and see that two hundred and forty percent change, that is where we at at the FinCom's recommendation, we paid for that outside of our budget. It's we have a regular technology spend every year to continue to maintain our technology. And so we just want to remind folks that that, you know, we 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 took we took that money and paid for it elsewhere, so it looks like a huge increase here, but it's not. Jason?
I just want to further that point, John, um that that line might look exaggerated. Um and our entire budget might look exaggerated because at the bequest of the town, select board and FinCom, we did uh retool our budget to make sure it fit within the parameters that the town was comfortable with. Um considering the circumstances we were in when we voted the budget at the town level last year. So um I'm going to tell you right away, Peter, Jill, Ryan, Christine, everybody involved in the budget at this this level, I I'm extremely pleased by what I'm seeing right now. Not surprised by any of the numbers. I've read through the whole line, and I don't want to take the wind out of your sails, Jill. Please continue, but I also wanted to reiterate that we told Steve um not to hold back. He runs extraordinary lean budgets, just like Peter does. Um, you know, and we want to make sure that we're positioning ourselves well um to best serve the students of our town.
Thank you. So on page four, under thirty two hundred, you'll see that the health services, uh this is an anticipated increase needed overall due to some continued health and safety practices next school year. Although we certainly hope it will not be as much as this year. Um again, I I will note that we were able to get PPE and health and safety equipment through CARES money this year. But we anticipate that we're going to continue to need some. It's very difficult to know what exactly those expenses will be or what state or federal funding there may be to help um defray some of those costs. But that is the reason for the increase in this line item. Under three three one two, homeless transportation is usually based on an average of the last ten years. Um Plimpton, fortunately, only has three years of data. Um and the bus contract uh reflects the three point five percent increase for the transportation line. Line forty one ten, this is an anticipated increase for custodial supplies, again uh cleaning as a mitigation factor, uh trying to anticipate potential needs. That is the reason for the increase primarily in this line. And then on page five, um forty two twenty uh maintenance of buildings has increased overall in part to uh a maintenance, an H uh HVAC maintenance contract um to maintain our um our system. So uh that's the reason for that cre- increase there. And we are happy to answer any questions you may have, but that's a a general overview with some highlights of the preliminary budget. And we welcome your input and feedback.
Comments, folks?
Uh well done yet again. Um you know, seven years in on the committee, and I've never been uh shocked and dismayed when we come to the Plimpton budget, and I I really give a lot of credit to Peter uh for running a tight ship a- and taking care of our school. Um you know, we really do appreciate your stewardship. Um I do have one minor concern, and again, this might seem contradictory uh to how school committee members sometimes react, but um I would like to speak to uh the amount of money being allocated for professional development and for reimbursement for courses in higher education. Uh this is an issue that we talked about starting two years ago, seeing a reduced federal grants um that we used for professional development in Plimpton, and also the fact uh no offense, my friends, uh we have a young teaching staff, many of which still need to get their master's degrees, uh many of which who are still uh becoming master teachers. Um so just making sure that they have the resources um to go out and pursue tho- that coursework and that professional development. So again, we can get the return on the investment for our students here in Plimpton. Uh you know, we've lost quite a few of our veteran teachers um the past couple of years, and um I know our our intent right now is to build um that core to be strong. Um so when each one of you get ready to retire, we cry just as much as we did for Mrs. Rizmini and uh for B. So I would just like to see us think about potentially adding to those lines in that area of the budget, please.
Well stated. Um are there other thoughts, comments from? No. Um I I do think it's I do think it's a really, really tight budget. Um I think you did a really nice job with that. Um I think we'll try and engage with FinCom um and understand how they would like us to approach some of our adjustments for for potential COVID expenses. Um you know, there's not much in here for that, so I don't think it's going to make a huge difference for the in the in the budget. But we'll just we'll get we'll get there some input from them on that. You know, I'm sure they'd like it to be lower, but I don't really see where it can be. You know, and it's uh so
And John, I I know I mentioned it earlier, but um the superintendent didn't mention you know, the reduction in enrollment in our town and the concern about that potentially leading to reductions from what we might get from the state. And Plimpton does not receive a significant amount of its um budget for the Denneb from the state, but we do get about sixteen percent of our budget from state funds. Um the Chair of the Education Committee did assure me again that we will be held harmless, and we will not receive any less funds than we did last year. Um that doesn't make up for the fact that inflation creeps up on everything else we're spending our money on here in Plimpton. But again, I just wanted to reiterate that point.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else?
I just had the police at my house because my ducks were in the middle of the street because I didn't remember to put them away before this meeting. It's very embarrassing. Sorry, guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you for sharing a quintessential Plimpton moment. Box on the street. I love it. Okay. Um, all right, there'll be more to discuss next month, uh the budget hearing, and also as we have some of the other items that we need to think through. So um this is going to be the first of many discussions that we'll do with this um as as well as not only in in February, but in March, as we work through with FinCom uh on on the budget. So thank you for all that work. Think we also wanted to touch on uh pool testing. There was uh because there was so let's let's talk about that a little bit.
Sure, I have a district update. Um I can include in that the pool testing. I can start with pool testing if you'd like. Um we did complete the initial interest survey regarding pool testing in order to uh discuss and consider um whether or not it was feasible. Um however, we did respond to the state last week, uh at the end of last week, that we did not believe we could afford the costs associated with this program and our ability to manage the testing requirements, even with some access to free testing kits. In a webinar um that was attended by Nurse Beck, our nurse leader, and Ryan Lynch, Desi explained that the state would pay for testing kits and lab tests for the initial six-week period, but that districts would still need to manage uh the coordination of testing, the collection of consents, the follow-up onsite testing for those in positive pools and contact tracing. Um so the webinar really did a good job of explaining or providing some insights into the complexity of this process. Um we would need to rely on our own in-district personnel or contracted providers to complete um all testing logistics, including overseeing testing consent forms, administration of testing, data entry, software management, uh administer the spec- the specimen collection to students and staff, administer any necessary follow-up testing with Abbott. Binax now, including the reporting of results, transport tests to laboratory for processing uh about one time each day. So in consulting with our nurses and given their current workload due to COVID, um our nurse leader did not believe we would um we would have the additional set staffing to support this program. Uh the costs would include daily transport to the to the vaccine to drive through testing oversight by a nurse at each school, staff or volunteers to swap, time to train, additional nursing paperwork, data entry and management, et cetera. In addition, we considered that we do not have we are fortunate that we do not have evidence of any classroom spread uh due to the limited time and resources. We felt that we might be better served by applying to vaccinate our staff during phase two, which is anticipated to start in February and focus on that. Uh some towns have are already offered testing for residents and employees, including Plimpton, uh who has PCR testing for residents and school employees by appointment. Um the other thing we consider is that not all of our nurses have been vaccinated once, even though they are part of phase one. And even if we had staff volunteers, we do not have concrete timeline for when our staff would be vaccinated to perform these test administrations. Um and what we're looking at here is uh test administrations with staff and students who may in fact be positive, because when you pool test, um if one of one person in the pool tests positive, then everyone in that pool must quarantine, and then they come back for an additional test. Um so you don't know who is the positive person, and you would need to retest those those individuals. Um if the state can provide additional funding or additional resources such as contract services to help make this possible, um then we can join pool testing even after its initial launch. But I just wanted to give you some insights as to what we considered uh in terms of why this did not seem like something that we would be able to do um with our current staffing.
Well, just as like, I was I was just going to also add to that that this whole program would be voluntary. So it it's not not like we would be testing everybody in this pooled fashion. It you you would still have blocks of people that conceivably could opt out, at which point, at least in my mind, it kind of blows apart the whole concept of doing this type of testing. You know, because you're not testing, if you're not testing everybody, then it's good, there could be some helpful results that come out of that. But when you weigh, look at the costs and the resources and everything that needs to happen, i- it just it it doesn't make doesn't make much sense as it's currently envisioned, at least in my opinion. Jason?
Uh and just another caveat to the whole situation of uh pool testing it. The Mass Department of Public Health would need to put out further clarification um because many boards of health currently state that if you are pending a test, even experimental test, you cannot return to a public setting. So even the fact that we don't know if the pool would come back positive, we might end up having to p- put people in quarantine just for volunteering to be part of pool testing. So we are working with DPH right now to try and get some clarification on that. Um people are trying to do some research and do some testing, and they're hitting snags along the way for volunteering um to be tested at this point. So I I'm glad that you're putting a lot of thought into this, Jill, and uh thank you for the update.
So a few, oh.
Good. Okay, Jill, go ahead.
A few other updates with regards to um the district. Prior to our return to school on January fourth, I had sent out a district-wide notice regarding the decision to return to the hybrid model. Uh we have not had classroom spread. We are in constant communication with the Department of Public Health, the Board of Health, and the Department of Education. Uh as noted earlier tonight, the town uh is currently in the red, and we continue to monitor for issues that may cause us to go remote, such as the inability to staff our model if we're unable to contact trace um or there is evidence of school spread. Any of those things um could force us to have to go remote. Um the second item is student learning standards based upon data that we submitted to the Department of Education. Also, for like in Union Thirty One Schools, we're cleared to meet the new student learning time standards. Uh this means we provide thirty five hours of live instruction over two academic weeks for hybrid. And if we were to go to remote, um we have planned forty hours of synchronous instruction over two weeks. In January, students in our substantially separate programs at the middle school, high school, and Kingston intermediate and Kingston Elementary School uh in which we have Plimpton uh students. Um we add an additional in-person day on Wednesdays that will be helpful for this uh vulnerable population who is unable to access instruction remotely. Um and so that began in January. We are thankful to the staff and the school committee and administrators who worked to coordinate this additional in-person opportunity for student learning. Um and that has been going going well. And And I think that might be it for tonight. I think that was the last of our updates. With the exception of the notice that the MCAS test, they have modified it so that it is less less time, a shorter window. I'm will only choose a sampling of questions to help give us, hopefully, usable individual data to help anticipate student learning needs and anticipate interventions for the summer or fall, depending upon when those results are made available to us. Any questions?
No questions. Okay, good. Any any other items that we need to address before we adjourn this meeting? And we have an executive session that that the committee needs to go into. Anything else? Hey, I would Mr. Frazier, can you help me? We got to we got to go into executive session and then adjourn.
Sure. Sorry, John. I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of discussing contract negotiations with the Plimpton Education Association, only to return to regular session for the purposes of adjournment.
This is actually with respect to the bus contract.
A son of a gun. I still have ducks on my mind, John. All right, I rescind my motion. I'd like to make a motion for us to enter into executive session for the purposes of discussion contract negotiations with the bus company, only to return to regular session for the purposes of adjournment.
Okay, we'll do a roll call, and Mike had to leave us, so it'll just be the four of us. Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
I need a second. Who's giving me my second? Dan?
I'll give you a second on that.
All right, so Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Mr. Cat again?
Yes.
Yes.
And John Olmson is yes. So thanks for the few of you who still stuck with us and for, I hope you have a good evening. And for the folks who'll be joining in the executive session, I sent the link out today via email, and I'll see you on the other side.
Thank you so much for your time, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.
Take care.